Good evening, everybody. This is a regular meeting of the City of Milton Planning Commission. I am Sumit Shaw, Chairperson. This is a seven-member commission appointed by the City of Milton Mayor and City Council, created for the purpose of holding public hearings and making recommendations on rezoning, use permits, concurrent variance applications, comprehensive land use plan and plan map, and other related plans, and amendments to the zoning ordinance. I'd like to go ahead and introduce our board members. To my left, we have Fred Edwards, Kurt Nolte, again, I'm Sumit Shaw, Ron Gilbert, Anne Martylock, and Jan Jacobus. And missing today is Zach Middlebrooks. The petitions will be heard in the sequence listed on the posted agenda. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures conducting this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. The opposition will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present its position. If time remains, the opposition will be allowed to rebut. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. The staff of the Community Development Department will be keeping track of time and will inform you periodically of the remaining time for your presentation. Each speaker must fill out a speaker card before speaking and leave it with a staff member of the Community Development Department. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization, if applicable, before beginning their presentation. When an opponent of a rezoning action has made within two years immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning action being opposed, campaign contributions aggregating $250 or more to a local government official of the local government which will consider the application, it shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respective local government at least five days prior to the Planning Commission meeting. A violation of the relevant state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed $250 or more to a council member and you have not filed a disclosure prior to the Planning Commission meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Each application has been properly filed with the Department of Community Development, signs have been posted on each site, the matter has been advertised, and the notices have been mailed to property owners affected by the zoning as required by the Milton zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission's recommendation will be forwarded to the City of Milton Mayor and City Council for final disposition in approximately five weeks on the first Monday of each month at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. The Community Development Department has reviewed each application in conjunction with various agencies and departments, both internal and external to the city. Staff's recommendations, findings, and conclusions are here before us in written form, which has been made available to all petitioners and to the public. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, dialogue with the person speaking, or outburst. Please turn off all cell phones or place them on silent. All remarks will be addressed by the Planning Commission. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. In addition, the applicant shall not submit material to the Planning Commission during the meeting unless requested to do so by the Commission. All material that you wish to be reviewed by the Commission in consideration of your application should be submitted to the staff of the Community Development Department to be included in the normal distribution of packages to the Commission. Finally, to the applicant, if your petition is deferred in accordance with the Milton zoning ordinance, you are required to update or obtain a new sign for reposting. Failure to update or repost will result in further delay. There are no exceptions. I'd also like to welcome everybody to tonight's Planning Commission meeting. If you are attending virtually via Zoom, there are a few guidelines I would like to mention. Everyone is muted and your videos are turned off by default to minimize any disruptions. If you would like to make a comment during the public hearing portions of this meeting, please raise your hand by clicking on the icon labeled Participants at the bottom of your screen and then click the button labeled Raise Hand. If you are calling into the meeting on a phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine on your keypad. Once the moderator calls your name, please unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone button on the bottom of your screen or by pressing star six on your phone. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and call for any public comment. Do we have any, Robin?
No.
Okay. All right, then seeing no public comment, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the February Planning Commission Action Minutes.
We have one item before you for rezoning as RZ21-04, VC21-02, 13555 Black Marle Lane.
Any discussion about the February 24th Action Minutes?
We've accepted the Wednesday, February 24th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting.
Other requests is to rezone from CUP, Community Unit Plan, to AG1.
Okay. We have a motion to accept the February 24th Planning Commission meeting and a second.
The applicant would like to build a single-family residence and allow the existing structure
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
to be in the front yard.
Anybody opposed? That passes.
Was it Ron who made the second? This is a density of .092 acres unit per acre.
Ron made the second, yeah. Fred made the first. Okay. Next item on the agenda is RZ21-04, VC21-02.
There's a total of 10.8 acres on the property. This is a location map, and it is within the subdivision of Boxwood Estates, right here.
Robin?
And Providence Plantation comes out this direction, and then Providence comes around to north-south direction. And this is the current zoning map. This green is the CUP portion of the subdivision, and all this other is AG1. And this to the east is an R2 that comes out onto, I believe, Doris Road. The applicant, Mr. Rosenberg, is requesting to farm the land with various types of crops, including a vineyard, and to produce wine. A winery is only permitted by right within the AG1 zoning district. In order to be licensed as a winery by the state, a designation of AG1 is needed. The subject site contains 10.8 acres, and as I mentioned before, it's located within Boxwood Estate subdivision. And that subdivision contains a total of 10 lots that vary in size from 2.1 acres to 11.77. The site is located within the AEE designation of the 2035 Conference of Plan map. And then here you have it, right here, is the AEE, and then low-density residential, which is typically platted subdivisions. So... This is an enlarged view of the lot. Right here, you have the cul-de-sac of Black Marle. The yellow line is the outline of the site that's in for rezoning. This is the existing structure barn, and then this is the proposed new house for the In regards to public participation, on February 23rd, there was no community members present at City Hall or via Zoom. The applicant held their required public participation meeting on March 12th, and no community members were present at that meeting location or via Zoom, which he had at his property. At the Design Review Board, the Courtesy Review comments on March 2 states, "One, provide support letters from all property owners within Boxwood Estates. Two, recommended to rezone all the lots in Boxwood Estates to AG1. And finally, recommended approval for the rezoning and concurrent variance." In regards to the site plan analysis, this is a grid of all the different development standards that are required within the AG1 zoning district. I won't bore you with all the details, but the most important part is to look to the right. Does it meet the requirements? And all of them do, with exception to minimum accessory structure requirements, stating that may be located in the rear or side yards but shall not be located within a minimum yard. And so I'll be discussing that concurrent variance for the existing barn for when he builds a new structure, a new house. The applicant is requesting this concurrent variance to allow the barn, which also contains a small apartment, to be in front of the new single-family residence. The following four variance considerations are discussed below regarding the request. Just some pictures to give you an idea of what's out there. This is the existing barn, and then this is an elevation of the existing barn, and you can see the house that's a bit behind it, tucked behind it, where the applicant is proposing to place it. Number one, relief, if granted, would not offend the spirit or intent of the zoning. The barn was originally constructed to house animals on the subject site. At that time, a primary house was not contemplated for the property. The existing structure currently meets the minimum standards for the AG1 zoning district, and based on the shape of the property being narrow in the front, a new single-family residence would be difficult to place in front of the existing structure. The applicant has demonstrated that the new single-family residence will blend in with the existing structure and therefore does not offend the spirit or intent of the zoning ordinance. The second consideration for the variance is there are such extraordinary and exceptional situations or conditions pertaining to the particular piece of property that the literal or strict application of the zoning ordinance would create an unnecessary hardship due to size, shape, or topography, or other extraordinary and exceptional situations or conditions not caused by the variance applicant. Based on the shape of the property, the placement of the new single-family residence in front of the existing structure would not... would create an unnecessary hardship. Number three, relief, if granted, would not cause a substantial detriment to the public good and surrounding properties. Staff notes that the existing structure had been used to house animals, but the applicant has chosen not to use it any longer in that capacity. Hence the need for this concurrent variance. The structure does have an appearance of a barn that houses animals, and to allow it to be in front of the proposed single-family residence, the front yard, would not cause a substantial detriment to the public good and surrounding properties. And lastly, the public's safety, health, and welfare are secured and that substantial justice is done. The request to allow existing structure to be in the front yard when the proposed single-family residence is constructed ensures that the public's health, safety, and welfare are secured and that substantial justice is done. Therefore, staff recommends VC21-02 be approved conditional. In regards to the request for the rezoning, we look at several standards of review. The proposed rezoning of one lot to construct a single-family residence and to be able to grow various types of crops, including grapes, to produce wine without customers coming onto the property, is consistent with adjacent and nearby properties zoned AG1 to the north, further to the west, south, and southeast. It is staff's opinion that the proposed use is suitable with adjacent and nearby developments, and zoning is approved with staff's recommended conditions. Secondly, use as a winery open to the public could have an adverse effect on the adjacent properties. Staff recommends that a condition be required to prohibit the property to be utilized as a winery where there are customers coming onto the property to taste, purchase the wine. This is because properties located within a platted subdivision and to access the subject site, one is required to drive through the Providence Plantation subdivision on a private road. Let me just clarify, Providence Plantation is not a private road, but once you enter Boxwood Estates, that is a private street. This condition will eliminate, quote-unquote, "commercial-type" traffic into the subdivision, but at the same time permit it to legitimately propagate a vineyard for production of wine. If approved, with the above requirement, the proposed use is consistent with nearby properties and will not adversely affect existing use or usability of adjacent properties described above. Number three, the subject site may have a reasonable use as currently zoned CUP. Four, staff does not anticipate a significant impact on public services or utilities. The number of students attending Fulton County schools were already accounted for when the rezoning for CUP was approved in 1996. The subdivision is already developed, and the proposed rezoning will not have a negative impact on existing streets, transportation facilities, or utilities if the recommended conditions are approved. Five, as stated earlier, the 2035 City of Milton Conference of Plan designates this area as agricultural equestrian and estate residential, and the proposed use is a single-family residence and farm at .092 units per acre. The proposed AG1 zoning district conforms to suggested policies and intent of the Conference of Plan if developed with the recommended conditions to limit the activity on the property. The proposed AG1 allows for the property to operate as a winery where the applicant intends to plant grapes and other crops and can sell the wine per the State of Georgia Farm Winery Regulations. In addition, adjacent and nearby properties are zoned AG1 as well as operate agricultural uses. The proposed use will not be environmentally adverse to the natural resources, environment, and citizens if developed with the recommended conditions. So in conclusion, if approved with the recommended condition, staff recommends that the requested rezoning to AG1, RZ21-04, be approved conditional, and the concurrent variance be approved as well. In regards to the recommended conditions, I'll just go through that. Number one, to the owner agreement to restrict the reuse of the property as follows: a single-family detached dwelling and accessory uses and structures; no more than one dwelling unit at a maximum of .092 unit per acre, whichever is less, based on the total acreage zone. A winery, but excluding customers coming onto the property to taste, purchase the wine. D, uses pursuant to Section 64415, Use and Regulations of the AG zoning district, agricultural district. This is, just as a side note, this was included because when we excluded the ability to have people come onto the property, we wanted to make sure that the other appropriate uses for AG1 were allowed. As well as E, use is allowed by administrative use permit or use permit pursuant to Article 9 of Chapter 64. So basically, at the beginning of the AG1 zoning district standards, it says you have to go to Article 9 to look at the various use permits that may be available to the AG1 district. So we didn't want to exclude him for whether it was administrative or whether it's for a regular use permit. So that was those recommended conditions. And then basically, the next condition is compliance with the site plan received on January 28th, 2021. And then number three, this is the request for variance to the owner's agreement to the following site development considerations to allow the existing structure to be located in the front yard. And with that, I'm open to whatever questions you may have.
One question. You specifically exclude customers coming to purchase or taste wine. Is that the intent, to your knowledge, is the intent of the applicant to turn this into an event space?
I'm sorry, to what?
Turned into an event space of any type where he would be hosting, he or she would be hosting concerts of any kind?
So you can ask the applicant. The intent is to, you know, to confirm, but his intent is to operate a winery. But many by-right wineries allow customers to come to the site, you know, to taste and to purchase, come to the site or the farm to purchase it. So you will have to...
But you're excluding...
I can't address what his future intentions are. This is only for...
But you're excluding that as a possibility of customers coming to purchase or taste?
Correct. For the sake of the winery.
All right.
Yeah.
Robin, we are to change to AG1, recommended, stated recommendation that we all of this area require a separate... all of the other.
I'm sorry, missed a little bit of that.
Okay. Right now...
That was DRB, though, I believe.
That was there, is, yeah. Oh, to rezone?
Yes. It would...
I mean, that would be the responsibility of each property owner to come in and to do it. He couldn't do that, nor...
Right. Okay, that's what I thought.
That's not his...
Oh.
Yeah. That was just a recommendation.
Not drastic, consider. Right. Okay.
That's not staff's recommendation?
No, it's not.
No, that's what I said. I just wanted to clarify that.
That was DRB.
There would be, have to be another.
Had made a comment about it. Looks like DRB made a comment about that, but that's not staff's.
Robin, does one B, where it says no more than one dwelling, does that mean that they cannot rent out that apartment anymore?
So that dwelling means a primary dwelling, so the apartment that's above in the barn, it could be considered a guest house. So no, we don't allow to rent out, but it's intended to be for family use or someone who works on the farm.
So it is okay?
Correct. Yeah.
And also, I'm assuming that, seeing that we're on one B, assuming that would prohibit them from saying, "We want a winery now, and in five years, I want to subdivide this into one-acre lots when we turn to AG1."
Correct.
So that would...
That, yes.
That's a concern. Is this opening up? Is this a backdoor into, you know, one-acre lots?
Right. And yes, it zones it, so you can't subdivide it, but the applicant will probably mention that within their covenants that they can't subdivide additional lots in the subdivision, so...
Now, in terms of the current variance for the barn, is there any recommendation? Like, can they actually, you know, expand that barn or anything like that? Can they?
So basically, it would be considered an accessory structure, and accessory structures should be subordinate to it, and so, I mean, if he wanted to make it larger, then I guess he would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and ask for an additional variance to enlarge that structure because, or, I'm sorry, he'd have to do a modification. So he'd have to modify the site plan to have a larger structure and modify the AG1 zoning, which sounds really weird because we just don't usually have zoning on AG1. So if you want to amend something, then you need to, that's a condition, then you need to go back to City Council to ask for that, not a variance, but for that change.
So, okay, I'm just making sure, like, there doesn't need to be anything else added into a potential condition that says they cannot...
Because it's based upon the site plan, so they'd come in for a zoning modification and then a concurrent variance to enlarge that accessory structure. But keep in mind, it can't become a 5,000-square-foot structure because then it would no longer be subordinate to the primary house. It's around 40-some-odd hundred square feet.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure hypothetically, nothing would need to be addressed in a condition about that. They would obviously have to go through...
Another process.
Another process to even do that.
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question on the standards review, because number six, it says that if they can sell wine per the State of Georgia Farm Winery Regulations, then we come back on the recommended conditions and say that can't sell wine to people coming on to the property to purchase wine?
So meaning that they could sell it wholesale, or they could sell it to other retailers?
And just a comment on that is, I don't think, I think wineries are a great use of our land. I'm assuming the only reason we are not, or we're trying to exclude customers and visitors is because...
Because what?
It's in a subdivision.
Correct. Yeah. And I think the applicant will have some comments about our suggested...
I don't think wine tasting is a bad thing for us in general if it's in the right place. I just would like to know a little more about that.
And then, okay. And then I know we had kind of discussed this in the pre-read that we had in regards to, is there any requirement that, you know, somebody having a winery has to also own that residence on the property? I believe Paul was gonna...
It is not a state requirement that you...
So just for the information for everybody else, a question had come up about having, you know, would he be required to remain on the property? And I kind of made a parallel with, there's many people who own farms who have barns, and they don't live on the property, but they operate a farm or a boarding, you know, they have horses, and they go and they take care of the horses and may go back to another property to live at. So we do have use permits that do require, I mean, this is not a use permit, but just for your information, some use permits do say, you know, the owner has to live on the property to operate that business, i.e. a bed and breakfast, they have to live on within that structure. That's an example of where we call out for a property owner to live there, so...
For the record, state law with respect to farm wineries only requires it to be located on premises that a substantial portion of the premises are used for agricultural purposes. It doesn't require anyone to, the owner, to reside on the premises.
Okay. And would this then be a substantial, would this then be the substantial proportion of the property would be for that purpose?
I mean, you can ask the applicant.
I mean, I will say, in fact, it also, the second option is if it's operated by persons engaged in production of a substantial portion of the agricultural produce used in production. So there's a couple of ways that it doesn't need to be either a substantial portion of the produce that's being grown, or a substantial portion of the acreage is being used for it.
Okay.
But no requirement whatsoever about residing there.
Okay. Obviously, we can obviously ask staff any other questions afterwards. Has anybody else got any other questions for staff before we have the applicant come up?
Why was this CUP in the first place?
You'll have to ask the applicant. It was just developed that way. Many times in Fulton County, they would zone to CUP so they could privatize the roads and put a gate up. So if you think about white columns, the portions of white columns, I don't know, maybe Mr. Rosenberg can answer that question more directly about that, but...
Could he put his winery on the CUP zoning?
So that was the purpose of rezoning to AG1.
He can't.
I mean...
I'd have to look it up.
Yeah. I mean, and you can ask that question to the applicant, because, but that was, I don't think he would do this if he could have kept it as CUP, so... But according to the information that has been given to me, that that was the purpose, is to be able to be licensed by the state as a winery. I mean, obviously, he can grow grapes and do what he wants to privately on his land, but to be able to be established as a winery, there's a requirement to be agriculture.
Anybody else have any other questions for staff before we have the applicant come up? Okay. Thanks, Robin. Mr. Rosenberg, would you like to come up? If you could please state your name and address for the record.
James Rosenberg, and currently it's 13560 Black Marle, which is the lot next door. So 1355...
anybody else got any other questions for staff before we have the applicant come up?
Why was this CUP in the first place?
You'll have to ask the applicant. It was just developed that way. Many times in Fulton County, they would zone to CUP so they could private, they could privatize the roads and put a gate up. So if you think about white columns, the portions of white columns, I don't know, maybe Mr. Rosenberg can answer that question more directly about that, but...
Could he put his winery on the CUP zoning?
So that was the purpose of rezoning to AG1.
Well, he can't.
I mean...
I'd have to look it up.
Yeah. I mean, of course, and you can ask that question to the applicant, because, but that was, I don't think he would do this if he could have kept it as CUP. So, but according to the information that has been given to me, that that was the purpose, is to be able to be licensed by the state as a winery. I mean, obviously, he can grow grapes and do what he wants to privately on his land, but to be able to be established as a winery, there's a requirement to be agriculture.
Anybody else have any other questions for staff before we have the applicant come up? Okay. Thanks, Robin. Mr. Rosenberg, would you like to come up? If you could please state your name and address for the record?
James Rosenberg. And currently, it's 13560 Black Mill, which is the lot next door. So 13555, which is the property that we're looking to, to do this whole project on is, is, was our old horse barn, that we decided to get out of the horse business because I have a bunch of lazy kids that wouldn't take care of them. So the horses got out and the grapes moved in. And that's kind of where this whole project started from. I wanted to clarify a couple things, just, just for the record. On the presentation, it said there's 10 lots in Boxwood Estates. There's really only eight. There's a lot outside the gate that was, we don't even know who owns it because it was foreclosed on for not paying taxes. And a couple of years ago, the HOA voted to, to move them out of the Boxwood Estates. The other lot that I think I saw up there is, is, is land owned by the HOA, by the community, and it's really just a, a buffer lot that is not buildable. So there's really only eight lots in the subdivision. My wife and I are lucky enough to own three of them. So I really only have five other neighbors with, with homes there. Actually, four homes and then a vacant lot. Couple comments. I just want to, I wrote down some notes as you, you all were talking. And, you know, number, number one, we're not renting that apartment. We, we don't want land, we don't, we don't, we don't be landlords. It's just not a thing. We've been through enough of that, and that's something we would never consider doing. As Robin mentioned, the covenants for Boxwood Estates strictly prohibit subdividing. So we could not, at a later date, say, "Oh, we're going to do one acre tracts and got 10 of them. Great, you know, going to make a bunch of money on land development." We don't have that option, even if that was a plan. The other part of that is, we saw that oddly shaped lot that we have, a lot of that's floodplain. So you couldn't build a home there if you wanted to. We use it as pastures for the horses. We use it as a riding ring. But the, the spot where we've designated for the house to be is really the only spot for a house on that 11 acres because of the floodplain issues that we've, we've run into. As far as expanding the barn, that was another question that was asked. That probably wouldn't be possible either because of the way that lot is shaped and because we're consuming a lot of the buildable area for the house. And then the rest of it, the barn is already there. So you really, it'd be very difficult to expand that barn just based on the topography of it. So I think we're kind of locked into an eight stall barn. That's, that's all it would ever be. And the idea about, someone brought up the idea of concerts. That sounds great, but that sounds like a lot of work. Grapes and wine for my wife and I is kind of our, the next chapter in our life. You know, as we own an IT company, that's our main business. We spend a lot of time in that business. And, and going to more of a, an easier life farming is really kind of what we're planning for ourselves. It's kind of the next chapter in our lives. I'll be 60 next year, so I'm kind of starting to think about, when do I get out of this IT, very high stress environment that we're in, that we've been in for about 25 years now? So that's kind of the, some background behind that. I did want to bring up the one point, I think it was C, where it says, the condition that there be no customers to come and taste and buy the wine. And although we could live with that, we don't want to live with that. We can figure out a way to do it some other way. Under a Georgia Farm Winery Act, you're entitled five tasting rooms throughout the state. So I could do the wine there and then go set up a tasting room in downtown Roswell and come taste the wine there. That, that would be a way around it. We could certainly do some mail order stuff that would allow us to, to, to sell wine via that route. One of the things that I've committed to my neighbors on, and one of the things that I wanted to point out is, our covenants for the neighborhood strictly enforce what types of business you can run out of your home. And there's a passage in there that says, residential use, all lots shall be used for those activities that are consistent with the current zoning attached to each individual lot. However, the board may, but should not be obligated to, permit a lot to be used for business purposes other than those permitted by the current zoning, as long as such business in the sole discretion of the board, does not otherwise violate the provisions of the Declaration of Bylaws, does not create a disturbance, and does not create parking congestion. So if, if I had a winery that brought in 10 extra cars, the neighborhood could say, "We don't want that", and they would have the ability to shut that down. One of the things that was suggested at the last meeting was to get letters from my neighbors. And remember, I only have five of them. I have letters from three. The other two have committed to getting me letters, but without me being a hound saying, "Where's my letter? Where's my letter?" They'll be forthcoming. I'll be happy to present those. But here's a letter, an email from my next door neighbor, Kip and Cindy Coombs, who ironically are already AG1. So why they're AG1 and why we're a cup, they're on three acres. We're on 11. I, I don't understand how that happened, other than I think the former owner maybe for some reason saw a benefit in being AG1. And he actually got switched from cup to AG1, I think, seven, eight years ago. Dear, dear Jim and Darren, that's exciting to hear about your plans next door. We are very supportive of your request of a zoning change from cup to AG1 to accommodate a small family farm and winery. I was surprised you didn't have that in the first place. I appreciate you stating that your plans do not, you're not going to commercialize the property and that you won't do anything to just, cause a disturbance to the quality of life as neighbors. We're very grateful for that. So one of the things that I had offered to Robin was, rather than saying there's absolutely no tastings, what we're very agreeable to is no business hours. We've never envisioned this to be a retail location where people can show up Monday, you know, through Saturday from 10 to 5 for, this would be a small by appointment only. Another thing to consider, this is a gated community. How would people come in to taste it unless there wasn't there, would my phone be ringing all day? Buzz me in, buzz me in, buzz me in. That wouldn't even be practical on, on a business case. So what we see is no commercial hours, no retail store, just a, a by appointment, come by and have a taste of wine and, and leave. And it'd be really small sets of people, five, 10 at the most. Because once again, IT is our main business. We're not looking to start a winery. There's just too much work involved in that whole process. So that was some of my comments. Like I said, I can, you know, give to Robin the covenants that were recorded and that should clearly show that the neighborhood decides what type of business can be there, along with three emails that all support what we're doing, you know, at, at, at a high level basis. And, and as I mentioned, you know, being agreeable to saying, "You can't have regular business hours there. You can't have a commercial winery." Absolutely. We don't want that anyway. So that's kind of a summary of, of what I've prepared. If, if Robin did mention, the home we're looking to build is about a 5,000 square foot home. We worked on, with an architect, provided a year on plans. And we're hopefully, if lumber prices go down, hopefully going to break ground within a month here. So we're excited about that.
Thank you so much. Anybody got any questions for Mr. Rosenberg?
I have a couple. Lot six have a house on it.
So lot six is, is, is where the barn is? If you want me to step over there, I can point it out or?
Yeah, so lot six is the...
Talking about... Lot, lot six is, yeah, lot six is the lot that's in question.
Yeah, that's the subject site. It's just kind of...
My wife and I own, own six, seven in it. Those are the, the...
Okay. Seven?
No, seven is my current residence.
It is.
Yeah, that's already there.
Seven is, is, right. Whatever. Seven.
It's, 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 well, it, it was listed for sale, then the contract didn't go through, so we're not sure if we're going to, uh...
Going to go to the mic.
Oh, sorry. We're, we're not sure what we're doing yet. It just, was supposed to close a, a couple of weeks ago, and it didn't go through. The gentleman couldn't get his financing, so we're not sure what we're doing at this point. And then lot eight is, is a lot that we own, but that's just vacant land.
There. Are there fire hydrants available?
Absolutely.
At the cul-de-sac?
There's, there's a fire hydrant directly in front of lot six. The proposed thi-, there's a lot...
Front of lot six?
Right there.
Okay. So there's room for a fire truck to come down and turn around?
Correct. And we, we, we designed the barn that way because when we had, we had up to eight horses at one point. And we had, you know, feed trucks and some big commercial trucks coming all the time, delivering things. The, the driveway is a, a kind of a crush-and-run gravel driveway. And so they'd come once a year and the big dump trucks, and they'd go in there and they'd turn around and they'd dump all the gravel and then they'd smooth it out. So yes, it's, it's, it's had good access for, for many years.
Septic system?
It's on septic. Correct. Proposed septic. We had that already approved by Fulton County Environmental.
Apartment?
That was an initial, smaller septic system. And then to build a house, they'll be putting in a second system.
You're going to plant vineyard, vineyard, raise grapes, make wine out of it? You're going to bring grapes in from other producers or juice or something?
We are. So part of the, the story is, my wife and I like wine. And we like good wine. And we're not sure how good the wine that we're growing in Georgia is going to be. So our plan is, under the Georgia Farm Winery Act, 40% of our production has to come from Georgia grapes. So we have some relationships with some really high-end California Napa-based wineries, as well as some Washington wineries as well. And our plan is to kind of blend them together so that we have maybe a higher quality wine than Georgia's potentially known for, by taking some of the, the local wines like Muscadine and Blanc de Boy and Lenore, which is a Spanish bunch grape, and then blending them with some of the more traditional Cabernet Sauvignon and Pinot Noirs that we're getting out of the West Coast. That's the plan, to create our own brand through blending, blending of the grapes.
So how, how much, how many acres of vineyards do you plan on your property?
So right now, we have 60 vines in the ground. At this point, I don't have any plans to plant more. I'm not sure I can farm. I planted them last year. I lost about a third. I replanted the ones that I lost. And I'm, you know, trying to do as much online learning and reading as many books. So at this point, we're, we're sticking with the 60. If, if, if it went well, we would maybe double that. But like I said, this will never be a commercial operation. My wife and I want to do this ourselves. And at some point, it becomes so, uh, uh, consuming that we'd have to hire staff and bring people in, and that's not what we're looking to do with this kind of like hobby, it's kind of like a hobby winery, you know, for my wife and I.
The, the location that you planted those?
Uh, oh, um, the, the...
One of...
Right there?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. There's a picture in the staff report that shows some vines.
So visually, from the screen, you guys, this beautiful, you know, vineyard right there. So it's very appealing for the neighborhood. All the neighbors, it's really cool. It has blue tubes on it right now because they're row tubes that they don't operate, but they're all really excited about having a, they used to have horses in the front, and then they dug up grass, which was, was, but now they're going to have beautiful vines growing right there.
Going back to what Marty was saying, if you look at 60 vines you have?
Yep.
And let's assume the most wine you could make, that'd be 40% of your supply, 40% of the gross, how many bottles are we talking about?
500, 600. So this is not, like I said, this is not, we're not going to be in Kroger. I mean, just...
A boutique winery?
Yeah. Yeah, boutique winery.
You mentioned that you'll be doing some blending.
Yes.
Would the equipment for that blending be on your...
Yeah, offsite. Because we, once again, we can pay someone to do that. And they'll probably do it better because we don't know what we're doing. And I don't know if, at this point, you know, we don't want to invest in all that technology and the equipment. You know, there's, that takes a big operation. And for us, it's, you know, we want to, so we actually, we, we sent out our first wine at Christmas. We did our first blend. And really, our grapes aren't ready. Our grapes are still a couple of years away. But what we did is I connected with a, a really nice California winery, Canard Vineyards. And I created our own label. And then we sent it out, sent out two bottles to all of our IT customers. And they loved it. You know, it had our label on there, our name. On the back it said, "Produced by Canard Vineyards," because under federal law, we can't claim production. They're the ones that made the wine. We just simply put our label on it. And we're not allowed to sell it because we don't have a liquor license yet, but we were able to give it out. So we gave it out to all of our customers, and the response was, was phenomenal. They're like, "Whoa, this is great, Jim. I can't believe what you and Darren are doing." My wife's name is Darren. And so that's kind of the model we want to replicate. It's more or less private labeling than it is having a big commercial winery. And my wife's kind of a marketing whiz, so, you know, the idea of getting like an online wine club and doing some of those types of, of sales and marketing events is really what the long-term vision would be.
Is the Coombs, I know you had mentioned about the Coombs property. So is the Coombs property actually in your subdivision?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, directly next door. There would be...
Yeah, no, I see them on this plan because on the plan, it says that they're zoned CUP.
And, and our zoning map, it doesn't say AG1. And I've been here the whole 14 years.
If you go, if you go online to the Fulton County Assessors Office, it says AG1.
And that, that's incorrect. Can't go by that.
Okay.
I, I mean, it's CUP. I mean, it's all CUP.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's, that's where I got my information was, from the Fulton County Assessor's site.
Okay.
And it's funny because Kip thinks he's AG1. So he's like, "I'm AG1." I'm like, "You are?" He's like, "Yeah." I'm like, and I double-checked it. I'm like, "Gosh, you are." So I'll, I'll have to let Kip know that.
Now...
You could make your case much more compelling if you brought some of that wine in.
How long are you going to be here?
Do we need to be here?
Give me 10 minutes.
Now, in regards to, you know, your comment about the Georgia Farm Winery Act and
Yes.
that it allows five tasting rooms, can you elaborate more on like, how would tasting rooms work? Would there be something that you'd have, people would normally pay to come into the tasting room?
Well, the, if we're allowed to have some type of tasting room on this property, it would be, "Hey, Jared, we got a tasting room. Come on over," you know? It wouldn't, we wouldn't be doing advertising. We wouldn't be doing, you know, it's more or less by invitation only to come taste the wine. When I mentioned the five tasting rooms, there's another winery, the Painted Horse here in town. And they, under the Georgia Farm Winery law, they could, in theory, go up to Roswell or Johns Creek or Donaldtown, Atlanta, and get a little, you know, 400 square foot space. And actually, under the liquor license that the George Farm Winery Act provides, they could have then a retail operation where people came in and they said, you know, "Here's $20. I want the white flight," or "Here's $30. I want the red flight." And they could operate up to five under that act. So my, my point for bringing that up was simply, if, if you guys restrict our ability to have tastings, I may have to go off and seek another way to do that. You know, and that's not what we want to do because it's more work, more overhead, more investment. But that would kind of be our only way to allow people to taste the wine, to be compliant with what we're, what would you guys decide here. So that would be the only way around us having people test, taste wine, is just take advantage of what the Farm Winery Act states.
Now, do you, does that act or anything require you to have any other types of licenses to be able to have a tasting room?
Well, it's my understanding is that, you know, today is really step one. You know, if we get the, the zoning, the proper AG zoning, you know, we can then go to the federal level, then the state level, and then the city level to apply for the proper licenses to, to have wine. And it's my understanding that could take up to a year. So, you know, we're still pretty early in this whole process of actually having people come taste wine. But it's, it's our understanding that we would need to get, you know, those three, that we need to get our federal, state, and, and local license. Then we'd have to get a business license, which the city of Milton would have to approve. So there's lots of other steps involved before we can actually start doing what we're, we're trying to do here.
Hey, Robin. Staff knew about the fact that the HOA would limit the number of people coming before they made the recommendation that said not to allow that. So what is, why is staff not willing to say, "Let the HOA control that and not do it by a conditional, a conditional variance?"
Well, we were just trying to be as, have, you know, your belt and suspenders. And, you know, obviously, it's our staff recommendation. So if you all feel that you have another recommendation based upon the information that you've been given, then you have that ability to make other recommended conditions. So...
This document was, was not in their hands at the last meeting. They, they were not aware of the fact that the neighborhood...
That was my question.
Yeah, the neighborhood, they, they didn't have this at the time. And I, I brought it up and I said, "There's, there's a declaration that says this." But I, I didn't know I would need that, so I didn't think to bring it. So that's why I've submitted to Robin after and brought it here tonight is because I wanted to say, you know, listen... So that's why I've submitted to Robin after and brought it here tonight, is because I wanted to say, you know, listen, the neighbors, my five neighbors really decide what we do with this thing. You know, they could shut this thing down like that if there's too many cars coming through the gate.
Are all five on the board? Who's on your HOA board?
McCorvey's, Coombs, and my wife.
I want to be sure it was you and your wife.
So is that, are those covenants actually recorded?
Absolutely.
Against the title, basically?
Yeah, there's a deed book and page number that's recorded, down at Fulton County, correct.
Gotcha.
And then here's, here's the document, because we amended them about a year or so. And, you know, here's the documents, and then every homeowner has signed and notarized these changes. So all eight lot owners have signed and notarized. I did it three times, obviously, but it's all been recorded down.
So is there a sunset date on it, or how long is those, are the covenants?
Perpetuity. There's no, there's no sunset date on that.
Some covenants expire, so.
Yeah, sure. Do you mind passing that on, so we could take a look at that?
Yeah, you can just.
So are you actually going to make and bottle the wine on your property?
Um, no. We're gonna have that done elsewhere.
So you're not gonna need vats and destemmers and crushers and?
I might do, you know, a little side project to see if I can pull it off, but the stuff we want to distribute, absolutely not. You know, when, as I mentioned, the stuff we send out around Christmas time, our clients were like, "Oh, that was amazing, Jim." It was like, we got really lucky, we found Canard Vineyards, they had about two hundred cases of a wine they produced for a Florida restaurant chain that went out of business because of COVID. And so he had, it was a 2014 Red Blend that was sitting on the shelf unlabeled. And Adam Fox, the owner of Canard, I called him up, and he's like, "I can, I'll sell you this stuff at a great price." It's only twenty bucks a bottle. Am I gonna do any cheaper? He's like, "It costs me more to make it." He's like, "No, I can't." He's like, "I'm doing you a favor." So we did, we stuck our label on it. As I mentioned, our clients were just ecstatic. They were list, like, "Oh, this is one of the best wines I've ever tasted." So it was about a seventy-five dollar bottle, if you were to buy it from the vineyard, probably about a hundred dollar bottle in a restaurant. And like I said, we got it for twenty dollars a bottle. So it was a really, it was a good thing that we could do for our first release. Our clients were super happy. And that's something we want to try to replicate, you know? Just to have really high-quality, very tasty wine that is priced super affordable, that people can enjoy.
I know there was a previous question about, are you aware if you can actually do this under CUP? Or do you have to change it to AG1?
I can actually answer that. The section sixty-four, eight ninety-five oh one says, "The only allowed use is on a cup property is single-family dwelling, golf course, country club, pool, and recreation."
Actually, correct. And what the interesting thing about that is, well, because when we thought about coming before the board and asking for rezoning, we actually played idea, played around the idea, what if we put in a frisbee golf carts and then make the bar in a country club? Because cup allows that. And then we could get a liquor license in our country club. So, but I realized that that was like, the backdoor into this thing, and I'm a very transparent guy who doesn't play games. I mean, this is what we're trying to do. We got a small family hobby winery, and we're trying to get the zoning so we can do it the right way and not go in through a frisbee golf, you know, backdoor method, which according to that, you could, but like I said, we're not, that's not who we are.
Yes, I understand staff's hesitancy and put in there, but, you know, customers and visitors coming in. You also mentioned that we might be open to something of, you know, by appointment, you know, one.
It would only be by appointment.
Yeah, one, you know, one party at a time, or something like that. I don't know. I would be interested in looking at doing something like that, adding something like this to this. Again, to help the, I don't, I don't see much downside. I get you don't want traffic. You don't want guys that have been spent all afternoon in the tasting bar, driving in the subdivisions, I get all that. But I don't know, what do you guys think? I'd be interested in looking in some way to limit that to one-party, you know, appointment-only type of tasting.
Let's hold that discussion for discussion.
Okay.
And that way, we can just try to make sure we go ahead and ask the applicant anything else that we want to ask him. We'll bring that up on discussion. Anybody else got any other questions for the applicant?
It's not uncommon for wineries to have by appointment only, and it's very rare that you get a free tasting anymore. So people pay for tastings, and they're not adverse to making an appointment. So the winery can regulate who comes, when they come, how many come. You've got a lot of flexibility that way.
And Robin, maybe you can help me out. Isn't, I think there's a couple wineries in Milton. Isn't there one in a subdivision who does it by appointment only? The one in Sunnybrook Farms or?
I don't know. I just know he grows it. I have no idea whether.
I found another one that was, it's, when you go to their website, I should have brought, I apologize for that. But it says clearly, "By appointment only." You know, you just can't go there on a Thursday at four o'clock and expect to get wine. It's, you know, there's gates, and that's what we have as well. So, yeah, that's, that's always been our plan.
So there is another winery in Sunnybrook Farms, which is a large lot subdivision that's off of Hopewell. So there is a winery that operates, but again, it's nothing like Painted Horse in the sense of it's very low-key, and they just produce grapes, and I guess from what you say, by appointment only.
No, I, I know Pam fairly well, or Pam Jackson over at Painted Horse, because I have a twenty-one-year-old fireman up in Hall County and an eighteen-year-old first-year college student at Georgia State. And they both went to horseback riding camp, since they were that big, at the Painted Horse, called Pamalot, the farm at Pamalot. And they actually spent so many years there that then when we turned, you know, thirteen and fourteen, they became camp counselors. And they spent a lot of years as camp counselors at Pamalot, at Painted Horse. So we know Pam fairly well, my kids know their family very well. In fact, my son Vincent, the fireman, he actually planted all her grapes. He was actually in between jobs, and she called him up, and she said, "I got a job for you." And he came home like ten hours later with like blisters on all his hands, just like, "I'm never doing that again." You know, but, so we know their operation very well. I've been there, I think, twice. And, you know, that's, that's their business. That's what they're doing to make money. And it's, we're very, very different in our mission statement and what our plans are. They're on Bethany Bend, you know, with a lot more accessibility. We're in a subdivision. So, you know, we certainly wouldn't do anything to upset our neighbors. We love our neighbors. In fact, they're some of our best friends. So it's, I think, very cooperative in nature.
Anybody else got any other questions for the applicant?
You said, yes, I missed it, the apartment in, with the barn.
And you that apartment?
Best house for family, people that can stay, yeah. In fact, in fact, if we were to sell the big house that we're trying to, you know, sell, and if our new house isn't completed, my wife and I, you know, we'll move in the barn, you know, for some period of time. So. So no, it would not be everything, any other than just, you know, a guest room, a guest house, whatever you would call it.
Anybody else got anybody, any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Thanks, Mr. Rosenberger.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
The covenants there, Marty's got those. All right, does anybody have any other questions for staff?
You want to check for any public comment on?
Yeah.
We have no public comment.
No public comment online?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thanks. Anybody, okay, no other questions for staff? Was there something, was, were you researching anything else for us, Paul? I forgot. Was that, that was the only question?
The last I was looking up was the cup approval.
The cup approval, okay. Okay. All right, then I'll open the floor up for discussion or motion.
City to have appointment tasting. I could envision things like wine tasting, dinner at a restaurant in Milton. I think I would like to explore a way to buy appointment, one party, fishing rather than.
That encompass actually being able to.
Not on, not inside, from their side, no. It would just be, you know, come to the wine tasting and maybe go to a restaurant. Again, this is just thinking, you know, trying to think out of the box, how do we bring additional people up to? And lengthen their stay, and have them contribute to other, other local businesses. You know, I'm just saying, no. Right now, I just think, you know, by appointment only, one visitor a time, just to come in and taste the wine.
Then, that require then? I mean, I think they're gonna have to have a business license regardless, but.
Regardless?
Right.
Right?
If they're a winery and they sell, they'll have to have a business license and apply for all their. They, I mean, there's lots of paperwork.
They have to have a business license regardless?
Right.
Yeah. But there would be no other, would they have to have any other licenses if they were actually gonna be able to sell onsite?
That's, that's part of the allowance of being a winery. But as far as, I know there's a lot of other, I don't know specifically, but they'll have to get the alcohol license from us to operate a winery, because we have different regulations than the state does. And then there may be other requirements. Want to ask the applicant or city attorney. But yes, definitely business license, and then whatever other licenses, the alcohol license for the winery.
Now, let me ask you this, Robin. Knowing that potentially they have these covenants now, would that change staff's opinion, any on the recommendation that they made for that condition?
I mean, I think it does change it a bit. I mean, maybe if, you know. It's up to you all, but yes, I think that that influences, you know, how to go about the conditions, so.
I think when you take a look at the recommended conditions, I personally think we should remove C, which says, "A winery but excluding customers, visitors coming onto the property to taste purchase of the wine." I think you allow that to be governed by the HOA, instead of getting more regulations and everything involved.
I think my concern with that is, you know, that's very temporary right now. I mean, HOA can change. Whereas if we said, you know, you could have one visitor a time, or some, limited that way to appointment only, I think that would, that would go with the property versus the HOI, HOA might be more temporary.
I agree with you, Kurt. I'm uncomfortable relying on the HOA for our enforcement mechanism here.
I think tasting rooms sell, right?
That's innate in the winery. That's part of, within AG1, a winery is, you know, a, used that is permitted by rights, so.
With permit, so.
Right. They would still have to get the alcohol permit through the city and the state winery. And I think there's even a federal license they have to get.
But your condition in terms of the recommended commission is saying, no, they're not allowed to purchase. And so even if they have.
On the site, I mean, it's not.
On site.
Or maybe if you said, you know, customers buy appointment only, or, you know, I don't know. It's something in between, you know, between the, between the covenants and what this current recommendation is, so.
But again, if you, if we were to not have anything in there in regards to the purchasing part, again, there's kind of two things, I guess, then if they have their licenses in place, and hypothetically, if they were to be allowed to have customers come, whether it's by appointment or however, the customers could actually come, and then they could actually purchase the wine from them there.
With the licenses, if we eliminate that.
But if we restricted that, we could restrict that in the conditions. And so even though they may have licenses in place, they still cannot actually sell onsite.
Oh, correct.
Correct, okay.
Is there a problem with them selling the wine?
Onsite?
Yeah.
Well, other than, I guess, traffic, traffic.
Yeah, you know, potentially getting into more of a business, being there basically, and people coming in and out, and, you know. It may not even be, you know, again, then you're talking about restricting. Yes, one is, one restriction potentially is about coming in and tasting. Now, all of a sudden, if you don't have any restrictions and you're allowing them to sell, then every day, people could come, and as long as they're okay with that, people are coming onsite and just coming in and saying, "Hey, I'm not tasting, I'm just coming to buy," and next thing you know, you've got a lot of people coming through who are just buying. They're not actually there for a tasting by appointment, or, you know. I mean, there's something else that you got to look into about that as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we limit it to by appointment only, I think they should have the ability to buy if they're there. That'd be my, my thought. Again, you're not opening a wine store up there. You know, but again, if you're bringing people in to taste it, the next thing is, hey, and I think it's good for business, too.
Yeah, you're gonna want to buy it, right?
Yeah, you don't want to buy a bottle or two or three, you're not, you're not talking about. Yeah, by appointment, yeah, by appointment only, not to exceed five a day, or, I mean.
I know Mr. Rosenberger's got his hand up. If you guys are okay, I'm gonna allow him to come back up. You want to say something else?
Can you just, excuse me, one second, just for formality's sake, could you make a motion to reopen the public?
Yeah, okay. I'll make the motion, the motion to reopen the public comment, allow for the applicant to speak again. Second, we'll just go with Mr. Gilbert on the second. Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, sorry.
My only comment was, you know, I think you'd be doing me a favor if you said, "To buy wine, you have to do a tasting." Because we don't want to be a wine store liquor shop. You know, I don't want to have to think, "I'm coming by to get two bottles." That's, we've never envisioned that, and I think it's almost like if you had it, if you're there for a tasting, you can buy some wine, but you can't go buy wine. You know, that's, that would actually help us a lot, because we wouldn't want the burden and responsibility of having to have a liquor store type of operation. You know, it's like, if you're there, and you taste the wine, and you like it, you can buy a bottle. But you can't just show up to buy a bottle of wine. So that was my only comment, because I heard you guys talking, I'm like, yeah, that's, that's, I don't want to do that. So, thank you, that's.
Appreciate that.
My God, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close the public comment and the applicant's, and we'll open it back up to discussion for the commission.
I think it's a great idea. I think it would be a nice addition to the community. I think it sounds like it's the right kind of environment, and set up a tastings by appointment. Small groups, come in, taste some wine. If they like it, they buy it, and thank you very much and leave. You could set your hours when you wanted. We could put in some restrictions as to how many, how often, hours, whatever else. But I think it's a great idea.
Around the room, Jan, you have any other?
No, I just, I think the more we help him by not putting too many burdens on him, I think is the best way to go here. I agree. I think it's a great asset.
Ron?
Yeah, generally, I would be supportive of this. I would like to see, don't want to turn it into, and I don't think the applicant wants it to turn into a place where there's a lot of traffic. And so I think it would be appropriate to specify numbers of people.
Bert, you have anything else?
No, I just, you know, think we need to help writing that, that new condition, which we got, but I agree. I agree, I really think it's a great, I think Milton needs more of this. I think it's a great way to, you know, we talk all the time about large lots, large lots, large lots. It's a great way to take, you know, ten acres and kind of, you know, keep it, keep it that way, no matter, no matter what happens. And again, we have to look too long-term. If you were to sell this, whatever we do goes with that. And I know your intentions sound great, but we got to protect against, you know, ten years from now or twenty years from now. So that's some of the things we're doing, but, yeah, but I think we need to rework C, under the, one C on the conditions to, you know, by appointment only, a number of, you know, five a day, max. Probably gonna be plenty, and, so, yeah, I think I'm all for it.
Got anything else, Fred? Okay. Seems like we've all discussed. Anybody else? Anybody want to go ahead and make a motion?
I'll give it a try. I move that we approve. I'll give it a try. I move that we approve RZ 21-04 with the variance VC 21-02 with the recommended conditions except for number one C, and that to be reworded to include customer visits and purchase of wine by appointment only, and up to five, max of five visitors a day.
Five what?
Five visitors a day, five, five customers a day. You know, so, but it's not a, and that's just a number of.
Are you, are you saying five appointments or five individuals?
Yeah, five appointments. Good point. Good, thank you, Jan. Five appointments a
Would, would you want to put a capacity on it? So, more than 10 people at one time? Or, that was the number that I believe the gentleman threw out during his presentation.
Sure. Good idea. Not to, not to exceed 10 at any one time.
Right, right.
10 people per visit?
So, okay.
I would second that.
Okay, before, I just want to make sure that, do we still need D and E now that we're not excluding the winery? It would just be?
Well, it wasn't, the winery was included as written before. So I think it would still include, this is, the uses are restricted to the following uses, which why it makes, this makes a winery one of those uses. So it still would say, "A winery subject to the restrictions that Mr. Nolte just dictated."
Okay.
So we're changing, we're getting rid of the "but excluding," and he's.
Okay. So you're okay with still keeping everything else in your motion?
Yeah.
Okay. And so, I mean, I tried to take notes down here to just make sure I clearly understand what you want to change, the recommended conditions for one C. So I've got a winery, a winery with customer visits and purchase of wine by appointment only with a minimum of five appointments.
Maximum.
Sorry, sorry, with a maximum of five appointments per day, not to exceed 10 persons Is that right? A winery?
10 at any one. Or do you have four? Or do you have six?
Got it. Okay. Not to exceed 10 persons. You okay with that amendment?
Yeah.
Or friendly amendment. Okay, so let's say here, "A winery with customer visits and purchase of wine by appointment only with a maximum of five appointments per day with a maximum capacity of 10 persons."
Tell you what, let's, when you talk in capacity, I think with just, I think, maximum number of customers.
Okay.
Of 10 at any one time? Just because there might be staff or workers or something.
Maximum number of customers of 10 persons. Okay. All right, so let me reread this again. "A winery with customer visits and purchase of wine by appointment only with a maximum of five appointments per day with a maximum of, with a maximum number of customers, of 10 persons."
At any one time?
At any.
Per appointment?
I think they were trying to get away from.
Per appointment, I think they were trying, trying to get.
If they have three appointments at the same time, each with 10, they didn't want to do that.
Do, do we need to think about hours? You know, do we need to do this during business hours? Do we need to limit it so it's not at midnight, or, especially include something like that?
Actually, I think that's a good point, because it is a residential area.
I propose maybe nine to six.
There's a hand in the back.
All right. Good with Mr. Rosenberg coming back up? Okay, we'll make a motion. I'll make the motion again to allow public comment and Mr. Rosenberg to come back up as the applicant. Second that. Mr. Gilbert. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Come back up again, Mr. Rosenberg.
Just one final point. One thing I forgot to mention is, part of this plan is, my wife and I, through some of her old friends and network, are, she's friends with a lot of the best chefs in Atlanta. And we're planning on doing some, like, wine pairing dinners that you might bring 10 people in, you know, might be one of the appointments, but potentially, you know, dinner could last till 10:00 maybe, you know, just, I don't know what they thinking it through. So certainly, maybe some language that says, "No tastings to, to begin, or to start no later than 7:00 o'clock," you know, so that if it's a dinner, you could have dinner, get out of there by 10:00. But then when you talk about nice things for the city of Milton, you know, we believe we're gonna have some really nice executive chef pair dinners at some point. We'll have to go through all the licensing to do that, once we go through our liquor thing. So that's down the road. But as we're setting some of these ground rules, I just wanted to throw out the idea, there may be some, some type of dinner events, like small groups of 10 or less, that could maybe run 9:30, 10:00 at the latest. So, just.
So what you're saying is that this is becoming an event space?
No, 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 no.
That's what it sounds like.
A dinner for 10 people, I wouldn't call it an event space. No, no. I mean, we're, the 10 people is something that, we just thought it'd be a fun idea to have an executive chef come cook dinner for everyone. So.
This, this request is just morphing during the, during the course of this presentation. I'm not sure exactly, what you're, what you're suggesting now is not in conformance with what we received.
This, this was just an idea. There's no, no business plan behind it. It was just when you were setting the times, I'm like, well, what if we had a dinner there? So no, if you want to strike that and say, "No dinners," that's fine. You know, like I said, it was more, more or less just, I wanted to bring it up in case we had a dinner event that lasted until 9:30. So if you want to put in the conditions, no, no dinner events, that's not part of what we're trying to do here. I always just wanted to be, as I mentioned, very transparent, and I wanted to be as open and honest as possible, and that's the only reason I brought it up. Not to do anything other than just make you fully aware of all of our intentions. So.
Anybody else got any questions for Mr. Rosenberg?
I'm puzzled that having dinner, serving the wine.
It would prevent them saying, "Hey, we're having friends over to my house."
Right.
For wine.
Yeah, exactly.
And dinner. So I, I don't know how we would control that.
Oh, Ron, I know where Ron's going with it.
I agree.
But I, I.
Well, let's, do you have any other questions for?
Restricting.
And the only reason that we even thought about that, where it came up, was that when we were going through some of the licensing for the, for the, for the liquor license, they want you to serve food, because they don't want you serving a bunch of alcohol without having some type of food choice. That was the, the only reason we got off on this tangent, my wife and I, was because, hey, she knows some chefs. Hey, we can satisfy the need to have a little bit of a cartonery board or something, so that people aren't drinking wine and driving in their cars. So that was the only reason we even put it on the, on the docket.
Well, this was discussed when we did the farm winery discussion before, of having some type of snacks or food or something.
Would the, would the dinner be served in your house or in the winery?
It would be in, in the tasting room. No, not in the house, in, in that tasting room right there.
Personal guests coming over for dinner, and you're serving some of your wine?
Yeah, right. Same thing. I apologize if I confused everyone, but I just wanted to, when I heard you talk about the timing, I was just, you know, we have no problem with the hours you suggest. I think they're great. You know, the, the five appointments, the 10 people, wonderful. It's, it's perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Rosenberg, as you're going, could you make sure that with Robin or someone with staff, that they get a copy of the actual covenant, so that they can go into the, in the record? I just want to make sure they go into the record.
I think we go back to what you had to meet, and we add maybe the hours. We stop it at 6:00, like, something like that, and, and that's where we cut it off. The dinner part, I would just, I don't think we'd go there.
Whole food thing's a whole different.
Also, just to interject, prepare food, you know, in a more organized way like that. It would require, you know, additional licensing, commercial kitchen, et cetera, so.
Okay, so, you, what do you guys say? What else do you want to talk about with this?
So do we agree on the hours, nine to six, or?
Nine to six. Wine only, with the exception of cheese or whatever. I think that's required, right? Some, some food being available, some charcuterie or whatever.
I mean, I think there were some discussions about food when we were looking at the beer and liquor last summer. But I think most of the wineries, from what I understand, they do offer some, you know, cheese and crackers, and, you know, some light snacks type of thing that are already prepared, that you can purchase type of thing, so.
We're, I, I, I think we got, we're all in agreement. We don't want to turn this into a restaurant.
Right.
Yeah, so, so I.
But there's nothing else required for that. I mean, they are allowed to, I mean, if they have to, if they're gonna sell even anything like that, crackers and cheese or whatever, I mean.
I know the other wineries do. When they serve wine, they have available, you know, already prepared food that, that they sell. It's, you know, just like going to a vending machine and getting a candy bar out, in the sense that, I'm not saying that's literally what's happening, but from what I understand, how other wineries operate.
Or do you have been? I didn't mean that.
Well, the serious wineries have, like, a deli attached to them, and you can get a loaf of bread and some cheese, and go out on the benches and have lunch with their bottle of wine. I don't think he has anything like that planned here. And I've been to a lot of wine tastings where there was nothing. You just went in and, and tasted your wine, and thank you very much, and, and left. Went to, went to the next one as quickly as you
Yes, we just need to add in, yeah. Okay, so I'm gonna reread what we have so far. "A winery with customer visits and purchase of wine by appointment only with a maximum of five appointments per day with a maximum of 10 customers with hours of operation from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at any time." Okay. "With a maximum of 10, the maximum number of customers of 10 persons at any time." All right, let me reread this one more time.
Just for my clarification, the, the appointments, five, five appointments in a day, up to 10 people at an appointment.
Up to 10 people at, at a time there. So it could be, it could be 10 appointments and 10 individual people who are, are, sorry.
Potentially 50 people in a day, on a good day.
Yeah, the maximum would be.
Otherwise, if you're by appointment, you can make 10, five appointments for 10, 10 a.m., and have five people each, and.
You could have, you could have.
Yeah, you could have 50 people, yeah. Each appointment, each appointment could have 10 people.
Or you could have two appointments.
It's not 10 people for the whole day total, it's 10 people per appointment.
Basically, 10 people at one time together.
One time, yeah.
So if that is hypothetically one appointment, that's 10 people, and he does that five times that day, then yeah, there's 50 different people that are there.
Or you could have five appointments at the same time, and only two people per appointment.
Correct.
Exactly.
With a maximum of 10. Right. Yep. Okay.
Get that operation, hours of operation, it was hard for me to hear.
Sorry, yeah. Let me read it again one more time. Got so many to scratch up. "A winery with customer visits and purchase of wine by appointment only with a maximum of five appointments per day with a maximum number of customers of 10 persons at any time with hours of operation from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m."
9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.?
Six.
Six p.m.
Did that capture everything?
Yes, that captured it.
Second to that motion.
Okay. So we got the motion on the floor from Mr. Nolte, is to approve this with the recommended conditions from staff, changing section 1C to be "A winery with customer visits and purchase of wine by appointment only with a maximum of five appointments per day with a maximum number of customers of 10 persons at any time with hours of operation from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m." Seconded by Mr. Edwards. Everybody good? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that motion is passed. Good luck, Mr. Rosenberg. Mr. Gilbert definitely.
We'd like to make that appointment right now for the planning commission.
All right. Thank you very much. We will move on to the next agenda item, which is
Okay, so this is part two of the flag lot, of the flag lot discussion. So Commissioner Gilbert gave me a nice outline. He called it the "flag lot primer," so, y'all have that in front of you. So just to begin with, the definition per the zoning ordinance of a flag lot means a lot where frontage to a public street is provided via narrow strip of land forming a pole or stem to the buildable portion of the lot. Minimum development standards for a lot, I'm gonna be speaking to AG1. I mean, typically, that's where we see the flag lots. There's a requirement for 35 feet width at the street, a 15-foot wide pole, minimum. People do them larger, but that's the minimum. And then the size of the flag, it depends on the zoning district. No minimum size in general for the flag. But obviously, if you have requirement of one acre in AG1, you know, that's all gonna be proportions, you know, with between the pole and the rest of the, the property. The lot depth, the structure needs to be within 600 feet of a fire hydrant. This is per the fire marshal, or the homeowner's insurance will be very, very expensive, because they won't have access to water.
Robin, just a clarification on the size of the flag. If you're in an AG1 area, so you need one.
One acre, yes.
Is the flag the one acre, or is this?
No, it's total.
It's the total?
Right. Yeah. Okay. I know we reviewed a little bit of this the last meeting. Y'all asked us, asked me to get some more information. So the city of Roswell eliminated in 2014, when they adopted their unified development code. They were finding, well, they required larger lot frontage, and therefore eliminated, eliminated flag lots. And I got a message at the last minute today from the zoning administrator. Basically, they saw that there were too many flag lots being developed in the city, and they, you know, the staff felt like that that was, she said there were issues with access, too many driveway cuts. I'm not so sure that that's, whatever, for whatever reason, that's what she said. But also that they just saw there was a plethora, increased number of flag lots occurring in the city. I wasn't able to get any further information from the city of Alpharetta for the exact reasons of eliminating it in 2001. City of Sandy Springs, they eliminated in 2017. As I said before, when they adopted their new development code, they did a full rewrite of their zoning ordinance, pretty massive. And they were, they required a minimum road frontage of 100 feet for each new lot, depending on the new, not non, the new zoning district. Why? And the. And the director, community development director there said, "They created awkward lots and allow the development of more parcels." Sandy Springs wanted to make the lot splits and developments difficult, in an attempt at preserving more of the natural landscape and allowing for less development, preserving the protected neighborhoods. And lastly, just Johns Creek still permits flag lots. So, it was asked about how many flag lot developments are under review. Right now, we have one. It's with three lots, which that's usually what it is, with approximately two acres for each lot. It's on Hopewell Road, below the new, or the reincarnated historic store that's now called Bloom. I did not do any further auditing of the minor plats, so this is the same information we had last time, but in review, since 2017, there was one done in 2017, fairly large lot configuration. There were three flag lot developments in 18, and four in 19, and two in 2020. So with that said, it was also asked to look at the number of potential lots that could be developed in the future as, as, as flag lots. So, we have in front of you, I thought, you know, if you guys get bored at night, you can whip out this map and impress your wife, say, "Wow, honey, what are you doing?", you know, but anyway.
You're going with Ms. Valentine's Day already.
Yeah.
So, I did give you each your own, so you could look at it. So, an explanation, the red is parcels that are in a size of between three and five acres. Some of them are within subdivisions, so, for instance, over off the Highway 9 area, there is a subdivision called the Five Acres, and it's literally called Five Acres because all the lots are required to be five acres. It's R2 with conditions of minimum size of five acres. There are some other lots, so Summit Road, they have, Summit Road is a gravel road, it's kind of central, lower central of, in the city, and they have very large lots as well, so some of those show up, but that's a gravel road, so you would, and it's already a subdivision. So you just have to kind of look at it to see that even though there's a fair amount of three to five acre lots, they're not necessarily all up to be subdivided, but nonetheless, it does show a lot of, I would say, independent lots that are potential to be subdivided into one, three acre, or three one acre flag lots. As we go on, we divided, and we did this more viewing than having GIS create it, but if you look at the bubbles, or the purple lavender flag lots typically were between three and five acres, and then the blue bubbles were flag lots with more than five acres, and then the more important ones, or what you might be curious about, are flag lots less than three acres with the green bubbles. So this is just a graphic representation of what's out there currently, and also what's interesting too, it's pretty obvious where the platted subdivisions are, so you get a feeling for how much of the city has already been developed in a major subdivision, not necessarily, and then you can see the larger lots that are still available, hopefully to preserve in some way or another. Do you have any questions? And then I think Bob wanted to come up and make a couple comments as well before we started our discussion.
Robin, do you have, I ought to assess here, how many flag lots got areas in red which are three to five acres?
So I think there's about 650 of those red lots, lots, but many, like I said, many, some of them are already within a subdivision, so, you know, you're looking at possibly maybe, you know, I don't know, 300 to 400 lots that could be subdivided into flag lots, because some of them are already within a platted subdivision.
This is a crazy question, I don't know if you'd even know this, but how many flag lots were because a family wanted to subdivide it for family members?
I have no idea, I couldn't start to say, yeah.
Bob coming up?
Good evening.
Good evening.
And almost you know me, and I know all of you from CPAC. So this, this, this topic really came up and derived from CPAC, it was driven through CPAC, and I think when CPAC got together, they kind of looked at it and said, geez, you know, what do we need to do to really look at future land use, and how the development patterns are occurring, and what's going to happen, what are we trying to achieve in Milton, from a land use perspective? This is a very important topic, because when we look at land use, we say, what is the council and the community and CPAC really trying to achieve? We're trying to achieve large lot incentives, large lot developments. So I'd like to report on that. I would tell you tonight that I've been working with all the developers, and they're coming in, we just did another one, 20 acres, this week, outside the manor. He came in, he wanted to do single lot, you know, single one acre lot subdivisions, we worked with him, showed him all the incentives, and he turned around and said, "Bob, you know what, I'm joining the three acre group." The incentives are good, it allows me, I actually show him how to do the subdivision, how it's going to benefit him, how it's going to look. When we give him the vision, they're gravitating to it. So, almost, that's like the third one that we've just done in the last two weeks. So, those are the larger ones, the 15s, the 20s, those are coming in, even the trophy club came in, said, "Bob, we'll do the fives," that's another huge one, and we actually increased the limit to as many as you want to do it this way, so that we'd give even more incentive on the three acre plus large lot incentives. So it's really been working. Now, the pattern that I showed you at CPAC was that it's kind of a checkerboard, so we have these subdivisions, and then we have these smaller lots in between, and that is what makes Milton so unique. No other city has developed that way. So we're really kind of a unique, the problem is that if we start filling in all those little lots, all those little reds that Robin's showing you on these plans, that all, the subdivisions are going to start blending one into the next, you're not going to see those gaps of farms and large lots. Now, the price of land is going up, going up considerably. People are saying, geez, I have a four acre tract. Somebody knocks on their door and says, "Listen, you can get four lots." Wait, but I only got like 60 feet of frontage. It doesn't matter, because we could, you know, we can do it, we could figure out a way to get you more lots, or 100 feet, 120 feet of frontage. You normally wouldn't get it, because if you have frontage, then you don't need a flag lot. Flag lot reduces it down to 35 for the physical frontage, so, it's under 100 feet, 100 feet is not even one lot. You know, we're trying to say you have one lot at 100 feet, right? See, if you have 100 feet of frontage, you're normally only going to have one lot, now all of a sudden I'm going to throw three lots. I mean, you know, and the price of the land is skyrocketing. People are telling me they're going for over $300,000 an acre when you subdivide. That's huge. So the incentive is there, the pressure is there, is what I'm saying, from the outside community. They're coming in, and they're saying, "Look, you know, might as well take them down." And I think the large lot incentive is really saving the bigger lots. 20 acres, I kind of subdivide them, I get them into these nice large lots that look like, you know, mini farms, some people say they want to go equestrian, but on these smaller ones, they go down to one acre, because that's what it does. And we incentivize it. I actually tell you, if you do a flag lot, through a minor plat process, I'll speed it up. You won't even have to wait. I can do it quickly, administratively, we can get it done fast. So we did bring this, from CPAC, we did bring it to council. We said, "Look, you know, neighboring cities have already, already eliminated this because of these problems." And here we are, Milton, we're looking to do larger lots, right, Milton? And we still have it, and people are taking advantage of it, and they might take more advantage because the prices are going up, things are getting tighter, so as the land starts to shrink and availability, they start looking for more opportunity, that opportunity's out there, they're going to start grabbing it more and more. Bring it to council, we did, which is what CPAC directed me to do. "Bob, bring it to council." We did. Council said, "Listen, we want to make sure that we vet it out, bring it back to planning commission, and you guys think about it, and that's why we're making these presentations to you all, to make sure that we can vet this out and look at it." Now, if somebody really wants their child, or their spouse, or their grandparent, or their parents to be on the site, there's other ways we could do that. We could do it through accessory dwellings, which we do. If they have enough frontage, they can just carve out another lot. But to sit there and say, "Okay, we're going to allow all these one acre lots because we feel like families are moving in," that's really not the case. We're not, we're not getting a whole bunch of family compounds, and if we were, then we'd come back to you all and say, "Look, the demand is really strong for that, we'll figure out another way around it." You know, maybe we'll figure out another zoning, or another way to get through that process, so we wouldn't discourage that. But normally, most of these are just getting developed, people are selling them, and they're going, they're going out there. So I just wanted to bring this all to you, to say that it's very important. I'm actually monitoring and working with the developers every single day. I see multiple developers per day, they're all coming in, land is very expensive, things are hot, money's cheap, and people developing. Okay, the price of commodities are going up because there's such a great demand for them, because people are doing it, so the price of lumber is going up and all, but people are still doing it because money's cheap, and they're coming in and they're saying, "Listen, we want to do this." So I'm seeing slowly the erosion of exactly what CPAC is telling me to preserve, preserve Milton, preserve the visual aesthetic of Milton, but then it comes in, and I say, geez, hang on, how can I do that when on the other end they say, "Look, this is as of right, you can do it this way." So it's, I just want to bring all of this to the board, let you know the importance of this, that I think it's a serious issue, I think it's going to impact the visual character of Milton over time, and I think it's going to incentivize people the wrong way. We're trying to incentivize larger lots, and now we're taking three acre lots and incentivizing them to do one acre lots. It's actually working totally opposite of what I'm trying to incentivize. People are coming in saying, "Wait, you know, now, which way do I go?", they're sort of looking confused. And we have a lot of people coming in, I have people coming in from California, from out of state, they're not local, these people are coming in saying, geez, you know, we love the way Milton looks, you know, what do we need to do? A lot of them are looking for larger farms, and we're trying to get them into larger farms, we're trying to incentivize equestrian uses, and actually have real equestrian style, we're trying to do branding, everything that CPAC has directed us to do as staff, we're already initiating and trying to implement, but this is one factor, I think, that's actually working counter to what you all have asked me to do. So that's why we're trying to bring it up, we didn't, you know, support any moratoriums or anything, but we do want to vet it out here, and then, you know, bring it back to council with a recommendation from this board, saying which way you'd like to go. So if you have any questions.
Well, let's just, let's just take your last statement, you want something to go back to the council.
Yes.
What do you need us to do?
Well, I'd like you to make a recommendation, and that we could bring back to council. You could say, "Okay, Bob, you know, we're going to take this up and say, okay, as a board, we're going to recommend the elimination, say, or the preservation of, or the modification of, the flag lot provision." And then we would then take that back to council and say, "This is the recommendation from the planning commission," which is what they asked us to do, and then it will be up to council to ultimately say, "Okay, you know, we'd like to go in this direction," at a workshop meeting, and then Robin would then do whatever text amendment she needed to do in order to achieve that, that vision.
The, it seems, from what Robin said today, and some reading that I've been doing on flag lots, that my impression, there are basically three levers that you have. One is just say, "No more." Another is the frontage that you brought up, perhaps it was Robin, the third is distance between curb cuts, that I've seen in some place in South Carolina, Pine Ridge, South Carolina, they modified the curb cuts, I think. It strikes me, well, let me ask you, of those levers, are there, is there one that's more effective than the others? And there may be other levers that I didn't enumerate there too, but.
So the curb cut, we allow one driveway, that some places you have to have a curb cut every 35 feet for that axis. We allow one common driveway, and then, in fact, that driveway doesn't even have to be over those flags. So sometimes you can actually have the flag lot come out to a street, and have your driveway approach totally off another street or another subdivision, so it doesn't necessarily have to even be on the road. The road just gives it road frontage, which makes the lot legal.
Okay.
So that one, I don't think is very strong. I think just, you know, that if we eliminate it, then we de-emphasize it, de-incentivize it, tell them it's no longer available, it will preserve those lots because the people can no longer, if you have frontage, and you meet all the AG1, regular AG1 guidelines, you can do it. So if you have a lot that's 600 feet wide, and you want to have three lots, you can subdivide it, right? Because it's a 100-foot a lot, so you could just say, "Okay, Bob, I'm going to have 100, or 200, 200, and 200," whatever you want to do. You could still do that, you'd still get your three lots, but you can't do the flag.
Right.
The flag would limit it.
That would require changing the code, because in the code, there's a minimum frontage of 35 foot for AG1. That would be the, that would be the lever that you'd be pulling.
Well, I still want to maintain the 35-foot frontage, we would rewrite it, because if you're on a cul-de-sac, that's how I do the 35, so I'm not going to eliminate that. What we would do is just write it in to say that we're not doing flag lots. We would write it out in such a way that you would no longer be able to have to do that.
And all these, the potential for all these that are in red, they no longer have flag lots. They can still be developed as long as they meet the other minimum frontage requirements.
That's correct, as long as they meet the AG1 frontage requirements, absolutely. I mean, we wouldn't want to take that away, whatever that is, they're right, right? So if they have, you know, the correct road frontage, and the correct gross square footage for the lot, which is minimum an acre in our case, yeah, you'd be able to subdivide it, and a lot of people do, a lot of people come in and say, "Bob, you know, we'll just make these," they say, "Okay." You know, even those, we're trying to save those, but we couldn't stop them, I mean, people want to do them, we say that they're okay.
But they've got to have the minimum 100 feet frontage.
Right.
And the flag is, you see, 35.
Right. This is taking somebody's lot who really doesn't have a lot of frontage, say they have 100 frontage, so they make a lot out of it, but it's four acres, three acres, they can say, "Look, you know what, if it's three acres, I can make three lots out of it now."
They could cut it at 100, 35, 35, 35. They could cut it down to 100, 35, 35, 35.
Because you do 35, 35.
Then you can do that, yeah.
Then this way, you would preserve that three or four acre lot, which is what we're trying to do. We're trying to create and incentivize these three acre lots, right? We pick three acres as the size. Because a 10 would have been, really would have said, geez, you know, it doesn't, it's not really applicable to these smaller ones. But we're trying to preserve them, so why would we then preserve the threes and incentivize them, in fact, really incentivize them, and then turn around and say, somebody, oh, you happen to have a three, now I'm going to give you more incentive to just go 111. And subdivide that. It's almost like counterproductive of what we're trying to achieve from CPAC, I think. So that's why I'm bringing it back to you. I wanted to come tonight, because it's, you know, it's important for you all to come here. Tomorrow night, we'll be at CPAC again, and we'll be talking about, you know, zonings and land use and all of these items. But I think it's really important, because this is one element that I think really would have a big impact overall, and it would demonstrate that we're really incentivizing, because otherwise, people look at it and go, Bob, you know, you're asking me to do threes, you know, I do flags and do ones. I mean, it's sort of, and if somebody has a big flag, and say they have four acres, and they say, okay, we're going to do three, four acre lots, well, then you just have the large lot provision. And I want you to do exactly that. You don't have to make all these little flags, you just go right in. I mean, that was the whole energy behind the large lot, so that we would do it. So if you have six, and you want to do two threes, you can do exactly this, you don't have to flag lot anymore. The flag lot's only applying for people who have smaller lots. You know, the three acre lots, and they want to get three houses on three acres, but they don't have road frontage. So now it's about stacking houses deep instead of on front.
A little confused. The AG1, it says the minimum lot frontage should be 35 foot. And you said you would eliminate that because of cul-de-sac.
I said, yeah, we'll rewrite it to make sure that we can take it out. But on cul-de-sac lots, when you're doing an AG1 subdivision, I still want to gain that provision for that, because otherwise, you'd lose the houses that are in shape.
Right.
On cul-de-sac, I think that's, I wouldn't want, I don't think it's the intent to do that. The intent is to remove the flag lot provision. It actually says you're allowed to do flag lots under a minor plat.
How do you incentivize the larger lots? How do you incentivize the larger lots?
Council's already approved all the incentives for the larger lots. So what they do is they say, normally you have to have road frontage, and the biggest one is you do a driveway, and then have legal road frontage on that driveway. Instead of a 50-foot driveway, now you can do a 20-foot minimum driveway. So right there, you're quite a bit, you don't have to do curb, you do rural cross-sections. We don't have to have streetlights, we don't have to have sidewalks. We don't have to have a detention pond, because when you have three acre lots, you can do detention on the lot. Water quality will be right on the lot. So now you've eliminated that whole pond. So when people are looking at it, they go, Bob, the cost of putting a roadway, putting in the lights, putting in the, building a detention pond, building all the infrastructure in the road, maybe the drainage, to get to the detention pond. When we put that all together financially, there's a lot of money that the developer has to put in before they start selling lots. The other way, there's very little money to be put in, and then they can turn it around and say, okay, no, I didn't put any money in, and I'm selling lots. And it's a minor process that goes quicker, rather than the longer provision on the regular, you know, subdivision, that takes much longer. The process is faster, they've given incentives, they still have to meet fire code, so it's fire truck access, fire hydrants, and things like that. But it just makes it a lot easier. We need provisions on a subdivision, where you have 50 feet away from, you know, an existing residential property line, like an AG1 property. But this one, now you have a driveway, and it's not going to be applicable. So some of these just kind of work for folks, it really helps them out. You have less traffic, less deselling, so all of these things, you have less lots. So with less lots, you're not tripping all of those requirements that normally you would. There's a whole lot of infrastructure that's removed, and that's all cost upfront for developers. So a lot of development occurs, we have a developer, right, subdivides the property, creates lots, then the builders come in and start building. We do have some national ones that do both, but they even, national ones like Taylor Morrison, they're working right down here, they have two divisions. They have the development division, they have the building division. So first one I'm working with, I work with the development division, just like a developer would, come in, do all of that. Then I don't see those people anymore, a new group comes in and says, we're building data, we're going to build it. So even the large, you know, national builders still treat it as developer, builder. And that's just, it's kind of funny the way they do that. And it's just, and sometimes, it's really, really great, I wish I could show you guys everything I do. Sometimes they're even finding amongst themselves, because the developer says, well, I could show, you know, let them do all of these slots, and they're not putting a whole lot of money into it, and then, you know, so everybody wants to show a profit on their divisions, so to speak. And when we did the one right here in Red Apple, we made them do part of the infrastructure, ponds, bridges, and things like that. So even when we're looking at, like the Trophy Club, we're asking them to make all the roads look real nice, rural cross-sections, any bridges look really nice, like bridges. Tried to do a couple of bridges, nobody took me anywhere. Public works will probably, they always find me on public bridges, but I just thought it would look really nice, I would come and...
No room for the...
No room for the... I heard it all, but I'm trying. I will tell you, you know, I want to let this board know that we really work very hard to really create great developments in the city of Milton, to really look, when people come in, at their roadways, how they're creating them, sometimes they just look kind of haphazard, or they're just straight, like, I'm looking at them, saying, you know, let's put some curves in it, because slightly curved roads really have a much nicer aesthetic. What terminates the road? Is there a visual at the end of the roads? You know, when you really want to do something, you have something nice, so there's trees, something other than just, you know, a pond, a detention pond or something at the end of the road, it just doesn't... And when people go back and start putting their performance together as far as their financial model, they come back to me and go, Bob, you're right. Instead of selling these houses for 400,000, we're getting a million, we're getting a million and a half, we're getting 3 million. Some developers come in and say, Bob, I thought I was going to get 1.6. A guy knocked on my door, told me $3 million cash, closed in seven days, he said, you know what, it's gone. Taylor Morrison, they turned around and said, you know what, we were thinking high fours, mid fives, they sell at 800,000. And he said, that's starting, that brave townhouse is that way here? The first one's old before you even built it, it's 980. And then now he told me, they'd be selling the million unit for over a million. And then they'll probably go and add more, than the three that you see there. So what I'm saying is the prices, and that's because when we do it, when we do these developments, we sit with them and really, really study what they're doing and say, look, this is Milton, the standard, the bar is much higher than you want it to be. And most of them faded initially a little bit, and say, well, what are you doing? Of course, nobody wants this. But when they go back and look at the formula, and what I'm telling them, we realize that they're really going to sell them for a whole lot more, and sell them quicker. Because in real estate, it's not just, you know, what are you selling them for, but how fast you can get on the street. And they begged for me today and said, they have 200 people, they have 46 slots. And he said, my prices are going up, because, you know, yours goes up until some of them drop. And this is why, this is why they want it, it is. They're even going to builders, saying they want more. And that's because we designed really nice roads, you'll see, they're all curved. And that's what we can do with large lot incentives, we could split roads. The other day, I met with somebody, and they said, look, why don't you take the road and split it, put some landscape balance in the middle, let's make loops at the end, and the hammerhead, let's really get into design, and really make this thing something special. We started looking at the 20 acres right outside of Manor. He looked at me and said, geez, Bob, let's look at the topography, you know, how to get great business. And he was, I said, all of a sudden, now you're talking a lot premium, you know? You're talking these lots, normally, these cities don't talk to people that way. They come in, and all right, let's open up a book. You know, what does the book say? You got 30 feet, you got 30, you got 20, you got 20, this is what John Street does, you know? And then the people look and say, but you know, the real estate authority is not doing it as well. It's all good, but not like Milton. We did our economics, so you saw it in CPAC, we were the bluest of blue. That was like the, nobody was talking, you saw it, right? I mean, we had a consultant give us the thing. And the reason we're doing that is because for the last 12 years, we've been helping Milton. We've been really, really studying Milton, working with it from a things-making perspective. What are we going to look at? What is the vision in Milton 20 years? This is what we do in CPAC. Looking 20 years ahead, and now it's time to look at things even more carefully in CPAC, and I really like your input. Every time we go there, and you all give me input, you might think we're just sitting here, but I'm back in the back room, leaving meetings, saying, okay, this is where they want me to be, we need to do it, we have this support, let's do more. When they talk to people, like, listen, I actually did a CPAC meeting last week, and the whole board is really pushing for this. You know, looking at one developer now, I'm like, look, I want a visitor center, you know, we don't have a visitor center, somebody mentioned a museum, I'm looking at other people, saying, listen, anything interesting museum, let's get it just in case, right? Somebody's going to stand up and say, hey, all right, I'll do it, I'll do a visitor center. I already got somebody saying, they'll do a visitor center for now. Now, you know, that's kind of a nice little, like, thing. We talked about amphitheaters, right? Everybody said we need more visual arts, performing arts, we need more amphitheaters. So I'm looking at the developers, saying, listen, the code says you have to have open spaces, why don't we create more of these kinds of open spaces? Live, work, play. We're working with developers now in Deerfield, we've managed 38 years and working on, hopefully it works, maybe it doesn't, but we're truly doing a work play in exact performance with what CPAC told me that they're looking for in that zone. So we are really following through and implementing everything that you all are telling me is the vision. For tonight, I will tell you that flag lots is something we should take very seriously, we should look at it, and we should eliminate it or de-incentivize it to the point where nobody really wants to use it. That's what I want to say.
Probably a question to the choir here.
I know.
As CPAC, we heard your remarks, maybe 10 ago, I guess it was. I'm fantastically in support of the notion of looking at flag lots, seeing what we can do, or the character of Milton as a player. So I'm sort of reaching out to try to determine what the next step is, as I see it from your remarks. I'd like to go back and craft an ordinance, I suppose, that would be presented to us at a point in the near future for us.
Yes, and then take that to council. But I would just want to make sure that we craft it, if there was some discussion, yes, Bob, we would like to limit flag lots, then we will sit down, and we will go through and craft that language.
Do you want to mention that?
I think it would probably, some sort of guidance, right?
If you want an official act of this council to ask staff to present something to you, I guess it should be in the form of a motion.
That'd be the motion, yeah. So we'll go in order, I guess, just to make sure nobody else has any questions for Bob.
Right.
Thank you so much, Bob. Open the floor up for any discussion or motion.
Take a motion. I think the motion recommend flag lots.
Would that be asking staff to present an ordinance amendment to accomplish that, to accomplish eliminating flag lots, is that the goal? The next step would be for staff to craft something, bring it to you, which you would then recommend to the council.
Reiterate the motion, the motion is that you recommend to staff craft an ordinance that would actually eliminate flag lots for the city of Milton. That's the motion on the floor. Anybody have a second? Any discussion?
Yeah, Bob, can you, you say that there's very little requests for family members to have a cutout. That's the only thing that kind of bugs me, is if I've been in Milton for many years, and I've got, you know, kids, I want to give them, I want to give them the land as well as giving them a place to put the house, not just have them sit, pick your house on my lot type of deal. Is there a way to protect that? And what you're asking for?
Bob, you might just come up?
I'm popping those things out every day. It's a little difficult, I mean, we have one person coming in with a subdivision request, and they're proposing to do a CUP, and their notion is, oh, I have a family, and we have six people, and we want to maintain six people on the six lots. But there's no way to really guarantee that they're going to be there forever and use it. People, you know, if you do something very custom, there's no way to monitor that, because somebody says tomorrow, you know, I come in, I want a flag lot, I'm going to say, listen, you know, listen, I got two kids, I want three lots, five lots, my family. And once I build it, a day later, I turn around and say, you know, what? My kids don't want to live here. I'll tell you, my daughter moved away, she went to Tennessee, and my son moved to Savannah, and even moved to Oklahoma, and then my daughter said, oh, I want to come back home, so she came back home from Tennessee. So, you know, I get somebody in Oklahoma, you don't know what's going to happen, like, people just kind of float all over the place. I could see it, if you want like an in-law suite, like an accessory apartment, then you can do it. But if you want to say to him, Bob, you know, say, I want to subdivide property with my kids, let's do it within components of the AG1 regulations, the subdivision rights. I don't have to do a flag lot for it.
I guess I got one question. If we eliminate those, does that have any economic impact on the current owner's value of their property, 73, that it was worth more if they got a flag lot versus not?
I used to think it did, but all the feedback I'm getting from the development community is on three acre lots, is that the three acre lots are selling more than the three one acre lots. And I found that kind of hard to believe, because they said to me, geez, Bob, you know, we're selling these lots. So like Trophy Club, they were advertising those lots at, you know, over a million dollars, five acre lots, over a million dollars.
The lot?
Just the lot, yes. So now they're telling me that the lot is going up over close to 300,000, or a lot. And then I said, geez, man, I really would like larger lots. So then, this is a property that's just around the fire station 42, so he came in, he's got land, and I'm talking to him, because he's given me an easement for the septic. So he was a nice guy, and said he'd give the city some easements for our septic system. He's going to use it as his mail kiosk area and that kind of thing, so he didn't have any problem with it. And I said, and I said to him, I said, well, you know, what's the difference between the ones and the threes? He said, I'll be honest with you, I'm selling the threes for more money than the ones, because the demand is there. The demand is there. So it's actually stronger demand for the threes than the ones, because everybody really wants the threes.
Well, that's good to hear, because that's what I was just personally wrestling with, you know, are you affecting somebody's economics?
Yeah, I was worried about that, too, when I looked at it, and I think that's a good question to ask.
My only comment is, I think, you know, it's incumbent on us to provide the tools, like the CPAC, right? The tools to get where we want to be as Milton. I think we all have the same vision of all this together, and I think it's incumbent on us to provide those tools for them, so I, you know, I support this 100%.
Anybody else have any other questions, discussion, or the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and take a vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes. Thanks again, Bob, for coming. And any other items you got, Robin?
Like I said, just be prepared, next week, and next month, we'll have a pretty beefy agenda, so. agenda, so.
Okay. All right, do I hear a motion?
Adjourn.
All right, motion to adjourn, a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gilbert. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, motion adjourned, thank you all.